Kind of parse out the time that we have, that half hour of time, based on the number of speakers that we have and the folks who want to speak. I haven't even called it already yet. And so, uh, the folks we have on our list, uh, from last week, Thor Steinhagen and Andrew Davis, Andrew.
I'm waiting on Thor.
Okay, you'd be first on, on, uh, on the list, but, uh, we'll wait for Thor if he gets here, you guys can jump on in. Uh, Mayor?
Yes.
Yep, you are on the list, and then we have Sheila Berry.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Uh, Cheryl Cruz?
Yes.
Michelle Susse? Very good, Susse, okay. And then I think those are the, uh, the folks who have called ahead and who have pre-registered. And so, why don't we get started, and with, uh, the five people that we have on our list, it's gonna be a little tighter time tonight, so maybe like, no more than five minutes tops for everybody, okay? So I will call our, to order our council listening session for Monday, February tenth, twenty twenty-four. And I would, why don't we wait until Thor, we'll see if he gets here?
Yeah, we're finally in push to the back.
And we'll start with Mayor. And I'll need you to state your name for the record, and off you go.
I'm supposed to write it down also?
Yeah, you can sign in after you're done too, that's fine.
Okay, my name is Bayard Gannon. I've been here before on the same subject, which is being the boutique for the new community health and wellness center, which is going to be built. Okay, um, I'll go over my points, and I have some handouts too, which cover the same points. So you have something in your hand to refer to? Okay, I've been a volunteer at the boutique for, I don't know, ten years maybe? The boutique has been in existence for over forty years, started in the eighties. And right now, there are over one hundred crafters who contribute handcrafted merchandise for sale. There are over twenty volunteers who run the place, I am one of the, um, leaders. There are three of us, replacing one, who did way too much. There are thousands of happy, satisfied customers over the years. Um, points as to why we need the boutique, why it should continue, because
Excuse me?
contributes to
I'm sorry, hold on, can we silence her phones?
Yeah, she didn't mean to do that.
No, okay, thanks, okay.
Yep.
Go ahead.
The boutique is very important because it does contribute to the health and wellness to the participants, both crafters and customers. So it really fits in with the Health and Wellness Center. It counteracts loneliness and isolation. And they are public health issues. Public health is a big part of the new building, like one-third of it. And Bloomington has an aging population. There are, um, people stay put pretty much, there are lots of new senior residences being built. And, um, the younger population is not growing as quickly, I don't think. Another thing, and this has been written up and researched, loneliness and isolation and lead, contribute to premature health issues, which probably wouldn't happen if they weren't lonely and isolated, and even premature death because of those health issues. So I think being a, uh, it's a health and wellness center, we should cherish the boutique and make sure that it has a place in the new center. And right now, I don't see that. We are feeling very disappointed, disregarded, disrespected, that a suitable space is not being made available to continue the precious undertaking, which contributes to the health and wellness of so many people. Okay, going on from that, I have time, right? Um, one of the features that is taking up another third of the space is the aquatic center. That is a big cost item per square foot. I did talk to the architect on Saturday, and he agreed, yes, it does cost more per square foot than just about anything else, well, than anything else, I'll just say that. It's a big space user, big maintenance area, so if we, um, made that smaller or just eliminated it, that might be a good idea, okay? So what kind of aquatic features are available in the area for people who want that sort of thing? Yes, I know, it was at the top of the list from the, um, the, um, statistically valid survey, and I've got a problem with that too. Because I do not, and I have studied the survey, and I took the survey. I don't think it addressed cost at all. Really, nothing, it didn't, it just, like, what would you like to see? What would you use? Okay, fine. Nothing, no, so it was kind of like in a vacuum, and, um, for example, if I, um,
All right, I'll just tell you, you've got under a minute now, okay?
Oh my gosh, well, okay, Bloomington Community Act has three pages of swimming things. Um, the high school teams use Oak Grove and Olson, and there's a proposed water park over by Mall of America. Um, we have Lifetime Fitness with a couple places, YMCA nearby, so, you know, there are facilities available, and then, this was just in the paper, a pool closing because it's too expensive to keep up and maintain, and that is in Woodbury, maybe you all saw that, I thought that was kind of an interesting headline. That could happen, pools are very, very expensive, not only to build, but to maintain. Okay.
All right, if you could wrap up, please.
That's it.
All right. Thank you much. And I apologize for, I think I butchered your name at least a couple of times.
R A R.
R A R.
R A R.
I've written it phonetically, now I will remember, thank you very much. So with no Thor yet, why don't we go with Sheila, why don't we head over to Sheila, and then we'll with Sheila, Cheryl, and Michelle, how about that? Come on up.
Hello, thank you for having me.
Yep.
I'd like to pass these out, and I would like you guys to see what happened at my house last June of twenty twenty-three. I had actually met you mayor, many years ago, prior to coming mayor.
If you can state your name, just so we have it for the record?
Sheila Berry.
Okay, thank you. Where did we meet, years ago?
Uh, this, before you were mayor, you were actually looking for my vote, you came into my yard, you and another gentleman.
Okay.
Uh, do you remember at all?
That was a long time
It was a long time ago, it was. And anyways, um, you were actually quite convincing, you told me that you listened to the community, that you were gonna fix things in Bloomington, and you wanted to know if I voted, and I told you, no, I just don't vote, and you asked me why, and I said, because if you ever become into, become the mayor, that's when you're gonna stop listening, and for me, that rings true. Because in June of twenty twenty-three, I was looking for, I was devastated, I called you, you were the first person I called. When those things happened at my house, and I was looking for a meeting with you and Hodges, that would never come. After three times coming here to see you guys, that's when, I think his name was Jamie, offered to meet with Hodges, but by that point, it had already been two years, and so many things have happened. Um, and I was hoping those things would end. For me, I feel like, you know, my son, he makes his own choices, he's an adult man, but that should not reflect on the rest of my family. The things that have hap, I feel like we're judged. I feel like we're judged by the police, I feel like they think that they can do whatever they want to us, and we're just gonna bow down and let them do that. And that's exactly what's happened with my relatives, who don't know how to put a complaint in, who don't know how to go after them or, or speak up for what's happening. We have literally, in my family, there's been like eight of us, that have been raided by your police officers, never finding any drugs. Is that fair? Is that fair that these police officers continue to come into our house and do this to our home, and nothing happens? And now I go to retrieve my things back from the police. Now all of a sudden, they're telling me that I need to give the, or give, show them, and they're gonna make a copy of my carrying conceal in order for me to get my license, or in order for me to get my guns back, and they need to take a copy of that. That's not the Minnesota law, Minnesota law says all I need to do is just provide them an ID. But yet, your department wants more than that, just like when you guys have meetings here. When do you ever see a police officer here? Never.
We, we have a police officer at every meeting.
Well
At every meeting up here and every meeting down in the council chambers.
Okay, well, I've never seen one here, I've seen them across in the other room one time, but never right here, but that's fine. And so, I mean, I should be able to get my guns back without having to go through all of that, because we've been through enough with your police officers.
I, I don't know the details of it, and I will have to tell you, I know it's an active and ongoing case, so
It, that goes to show what you know, because it is resolved.
I, I believe one portion of the case is, but I understand from our city attorney that there's another portion of the case that is active and unresolved at this moment. And I, I wanna be, I wanna caution the council as well, that we have to be careful what we say and, and the questions we ask, and that, uh, any comments that we would might make, because that could impact the investigation, and I don't want to
Oh my goodness, every time I come here, this is what I get from you, that's pathetic, it's pathetic. Thank you for nothing again.
Is there an active investigation?
What?
Is there an active investigation?
No, not that I'm aware of.
That's, that's what I have been told, so
Okay, this is the first I'm hearing about it, I know you'll do anything
Well, we will get, we will, we will get back to you with, uh, the reasons why we're not able to comment on this.
Okay, when?
Um, or later this week.
Perfect.
Next week, yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, but I want him to see.
While we're doing that, just to clarify, you said twenty twenty-three?
Yes.
Is that right?
Okay.
Right, well, thank you for bringing me the picture, bringing the pictures, I appreciate it.
Oh, yeah.
Cheryl?
I gotta sit again. Hi, I'm Cheryl Cross, I'm Sheila's mom. And I've gone through all of this with her for the last ten, fifteen years. And, um, they've even come to my place looking for her son. And he used to stay there once in a while, but he didn't live there, and I'm a grandma. And he's the second one of the top of my seventeen, eighteen grandkids. So my first two grandkids really mean a lot to me. And anyway, just an incident the other day on January tenth, I believe. Uh, he had an overdose, and he was picked up. Tony now, he's like six feet, three hundred pounds, and he's like a teddy bear, he's a very nice guy, I mean, he, he wouldn't hurt anybody. Anyway, um, he was brought to emergency room in Edina, where he was handcuffed, hands behind his back on a table for fifteen hours. Said he had to pee, and they said pee sideways. And then, uh, a doctor, or they must have asked a doctor if he could be loose or whatever, he said it's up to the Bloomington police. And they said no. And he ended up leaving there with some kind of urinary infection. And they were supposed to follow up with him within four days. They never did. And I guess just recently, um, Sheila has talked to the nurse at the jail, and they were kinda checking into, did you wanna say something?
Your phone's ringing again.
It is, I have it down. Oh my God, well, you got good ears. I got it. So anyway, I am seventy-six years old. And to keep continually seeing all this, and the hurt, the hurt my daughter has gone through, the embarrassment she's gone through. Arresting her at her home when they're breaking in, and they're not finding anything. Handcuffing her in her garage, destroying her basement, which was beautiful, destroying her front, front door. And then Tony at that time was there, but they didn't find anything. They had him walk out barefoot on glass to the car and get in their squad car and say, if you move, I'm gonna tase you. And it's just pitiful to hear all this, poor boy has gone through, and he has an addiction, that's what it is, an addiction. He never gets help for it, they need to send him away to one of those year, year-long ones. Cause the other ones, they've sent him to either sell drugs or tell them where to get them. Or plant them on him like they did in Rochester, and then bring him back to Hannah Peak County. I guess that's all I got to say, but I wanted you to hear it's still going on. And I pray to God every night that this ends, but it never ends. Do I need to sign in or anything?
If you could, as you finish up here, if you could just sign in, just
I guess I'm pretty much done.
Thank you, thank you for sharing with us.
Sure. Is that all I do?
Cheryl?
Thank you.
I'm Michelle Susse, um, good friends of the Berry family, and I don't have a whole lot different to say what the previous two have said, but I've been witness to the harassment and the stalking and the intimidating that the family has gotten because of their son. It's not, it's not a family addiction, he's an addict, gentle. But the family's paying the price, I mean, even when they did a warrant search back in June two thousand twenty-three, their twelve-year-old daughter was in the shower and was taken out by a male officer naked. She's traumatized from that, their grandkids are traumatized from that, and they're actually in therapy right now. And garbage man, we were at, at her daughter's bus stop, and he was there motioning his hands to come on, come on, come on, and when we wouldn't get out of the car, he started video recording. And it's just, it's just coincidence after coincidence, and there's been a couple times where I've left the Berry home, and I've been pulled over within a block. No reason. Oh, we noticed your license plate, my license plate is good till September when my tabs are due. You know, and I'm, I'm not, I'm just saying the harassment, I feel like they're being singled out, I feel like they're being stereotyped and treated in a kind of a derogatory way, and it's affecting everyone's mentality. It's affecting, I, I'm their friend, and it even affects me, you know, witnessing and, and it's been, it's been heard, this story has been heard a few times, but let's, let's fix it. Please try to fix it, I mean, show, show the family respect, their, their son's in custody. So they shouldn't be getting harassed or anything, yeah, you know, I, I don't have a whole lot more to say, but please, I'm, I'm just another person asking, please, fix this. Please do something about, I mean, she's, she when they, when they found her weapons, they were locked up, so why were they confiscated? And then to try to get them back after the issue's been resolved, and they're putting her through the hoop on that too. You know, it's, it's just, it's not fair to the family, you know, and just because one person is an addict doesn't make the whole family an addict, and I don't like to see them stereotyped and discriminated against. And that's, that's pretty much what I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening, I appreciate it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Did you wanna speak tonight, or?
No, I'm here to support the boutique
Got it.
the new center, but I was looking at the drawings on Saturday, and I believe
Okay, if, if you, if you wanna talk, you, we've got a couple minutes here, so if you wanna, if you wanna talk, come on up, identify yourself.
Well, thank you for allowing me to speak for a moment. My name's Christine Thompson. And I was looking at the drawings, and I do believe that the need for boutique still exists. It's, it's inspiration for the people that do crafts, they have a source and a place to sell their goods, display their goods. And I believe that behind the front desk, between the front desk and the elevator, if a glass room was put in, glass walls, and then that would be displaying the artwork as people were passing through. And it would be able to have it under lock and key, because it is in a glass room. And it, you don't need as many pe, when you're having, talking about kiosks, there's too many people have to look after kiosks, and then you have to haul them off and lock them up somewhere. Having a room that's all glass displayed, doesn't matter what time of day, there's always something on display as they walk by. And the door could be at the front desk, right at the side of the front desk to get into that glass room. So that's my idea about the boutique, and I really believe it still needs to happen. So I'll sign in.
I, did, did you share that idea on Saturday with the, you said you were there on Saturday, did you share that idea with the
I did, and, and I'm going to talk with them again on Thursday.
Good.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you, thanks for stepping up. Right, Andrew, any word on Thor, is he coming?
No, I haven't heard from him, so I'll speak, he was the one more prepared, but he didn't show up.
Okay.
I will do my best, um, my name is Andrew Davis, I run a small business here in Bloomington, as well as a few other people I know that have had similar issues. Um, so I just, first time homeowner, I just bought a house back in February, and since moving in, I believe I've had eight complaints from the city now. It's not, I mean, obviously the city's job is to enforce, except with my business, I do like lawn care and landscaping. So I have one trailer that dumps all like the goods, and I have a nice enclosed trailer. None of my vehicles, none of my trailers have any sort of branding, I like their big billboards, eyesores, everything is twenty twenty-two or newer, so it's like nothing's torn down like a wreck in my yard, and this is now the eighth complaint that I've had. I, I'd just love to come to a compromise on, I mean, I get, it's the city laws, but I'd really like, I'd appreciate if somebody's like willing to hear, like if we could register like a vehicle or a trailer, and just like make sure things are there, cause just down the street from me, I've got a neighbor who's got a gravel driveway with like waist-tall weeds, an old RV rotting in there, he's got an old truck that's like rusting away, you can see the rust in the driveway from where it's been sitting so long, and a boat that sits in his yard uncovered, yeah, it's one of my, I don't know who, but people on my block have told me there's a lady towards the end of the street that calls in every little thing, so I've got one person who calls in everything, and we were just trying to come to a compromise, cause I'm sure as some of you guys are homeowners, comes like leaf season, you guys don't wanna do your leaf cleanup or snow removal, you don't wanna plow your snow, all small businesses are the people who take care of that, and now if you go to like a storage unit to store one of these things, you're looking at like sometimes like a thousand to two thousand dollars a month, just to store this stuff, and like the only reason I bought a house, if I would've known this prior to buying a house in Bloomington, I truthfully would not have bought a house here. But now, living here, I've learned this stuff, so I'd really like to just be able to come to some sort of compromise or some way to make this stuff work, that way I'm able to like run my business out of my houses, like the state of Minnesota lets me write off a portion of my house and my taxes, I feel like the city of Bloomington should allow me to use a part of my house for my business as well.
And so you've been contacted by environmental health and safety, I'm assuming?
Uh, Josh, oh, that's, well, I don't know what exactly he does, but he's the guy I've dealt with every single time.
That's environmental health, and they're, they are the folks who, they're required, they, they go out, they follow, basically it's city ordinance, following city ordinance. Uh, what you can have in your front yard, what you can't, um, I'm guessing that if your, if your neighbor calls in every little thing, I'm guessing we've probably heard about the rusted truck and the waste deep weeds as well.
But like technically, reading on like online, I don't think that's against the law, which is kind of what throws me for a loop, is you can have a big old RV or like, there's somebody off, it's like eighty-second and Penn, or like eighty-fourth and Penn, they've got like a party bus, it's like you look in it and it's got like stripper poles in the middle, it's painted all black with tinted windows, it's very clearly a party bus, I mean, I haven't heard of very many people running a party bus for private use, so I'm assuming it's like their side business or something that they're running out of their driveway, and you see it parked there all the time, so it's just, I, I don't know, I mean, I feel like if you can have a big bus, RV, any of that stuff, and then the other thing that I have is, I also have, I have a storage already, but it's like, I get the harassment like over a weekend. Like, if I'm like during the fall season, it doesn't make sense for me to drive to my storage every day, and put my trailer right, then just turn around next morning, get it, I feel like I should be able to park it there overnight, like during the week, then the weekend, I get it, it goes away, cause it's not in use over the weekend, but it's like day to day, like I get up at seven AM in this, in like the fall, I'm working seven to seven, like twelve hours a day, so it's like the trailer's not there, but clearly whoever's on my block is persistent about getting rid of it. So I'd just love if we could come to like some kind of compromise with the city, like register vehicles or something, or figure it out there, cause what I have here is a portion of what I see around me that people are allowed to have.
Aside from all of that, have you sat down with, my, my point being with the environmental health and safety, have you sat down with environmental health and safety?
I haven't, I haven't had a chance to down, I've only talked to him on the phone.
Okay, uh, I, I would recommend that as a starting point to figure out why they keep calling you. You know, and I don't know what the, I don't know what the specific violation might be, so, uh, so I would, I would have that conversation with them, ask them what it would take to resolve that, if they say
He basically told me there's no resolution, and that he's being nice to me.
Ah, okay, well, um,
I was like, uh, there's a lot of other people I'm sure you could be nice to too, but I'm the one who gets picked on.
Councilmember DeLaScandro?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I, I thought, and maybe I'm wrong, but I thought we had on the work plan, and
Yeah.
you, we do, right? I think that there's, we're looking at this, because this is not the first time we've heard of this, so I think that we had a request to take a look at some of these ordinances and see if we can make some changes to make it a little easier. I, I don't know where that's at, but I'll defer to you all about that, but I thought we had that in the work plan somewhere this year.
And, and
Small business.
Yeah, I say, I'm not, I'm not a big business, it's literally, it's me and one guy that I have working for me, and I, all I have is the two trailers.
Yeah.
And like
Well, it was not related specifically to the small business initiative, but it was related to, there were a couple of other complaints about
Yep.
Uh, the catalytic converter problem was another reason, like people were, people were bringing their work trucks home because it was safer than leaving them on the locks and having their catalytic converters, you know, stolen and stuff like that, so I thought we were looking at that. Okay, I'm not the only one who thought it, here's, okay, so we may, we may be already working on a resolution, is another thing I wanted to
Yeah, I just don't want it to get to the point where I'm like, starting to have to like pay fines and stuff, and like
I understand.
get on some type of like bad list where it's like they're doing checkups, cause that's what it feels like, cause I've seen this, I've seen the little like city of Bloomington Toyota Corolla drive by my house like countless times, I could pull up like security footage of the guy just driving by randomly, and then sure enough, like three days later in the mail, here comes a citation.
Is how it works.
It is. Um, we, I will ask environmental health and safety to reach out to you, maybe you two can
Yeah, I'd love to give you my info, I mean, it's on my shirt, but I can write whatever down.
If you, why don't you write down your name and phone number there, contact information?
You can make a connection to community development too, cause E H makes that, to have the ordinance.
Yep, and we'll, we'll make the connection with community health also, and, um, you know, and, and understanding that you know, for everybody that's got a business, there are, you know, how many people in their neighborhood who don't, don't wanna look at their business in their front yard?
I'm, I'm aware, but that, like, that's my thing, is like, I miss, I might be biased, but a like untouched trailer that has nothing on it looks a lot better than like a forty-foot RV and a rotting boat sitting there in somebody's gravel driveway, where it's like, I mean, I try and take like pride in my house, I don't like let things get nasty out of hound, there's nothing in my yard, all that, I keep it
I know what you're saying.
Simple.
Understand what you're saying. But yeah, we'll, I'll get your contact information, and we'll have folks reach out to you.
Awesome, thank you.
All right.
Would you also be able to send us, uh, photos of your trailer, if you haven't already?
Oh yeah, no, I mean, I, he hasn't, the only one I've sent him is my N plus trailer, he made me send a picture of a four-wheeler in it, cause I have it registered as like whatever, um, recreational use, cause it does get used for that stuff every now and then. But yeah, and I can
Do you send it to, to the council?
Yeah, I can send it to whatever.
Yeah, it's just, I think it's council@bloomingtonm and
City council.
City council.
Let me write it down, okay.
Yeah, city dash council.
We gotta get downstairs?
Give you one second, sorry.
All right.
You can just You don't have to do it right now.
Just send it to legal.
You can send it to legal, we'll take, we'll, we'll get you, we, we'll, we'll connect with you. We are adjourned, let's head downstairs, thanks to We are adjourned. Let's head downstairs. Thanks, everybody.